Alright, I'm ready to start.
You guys ready? To get this meeting started, it's Monday, October 19th.
Slides to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a pretty large agenda, so we're gonna try to keep it moving. Um, roll call please.
Mayor Laufman.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stolman.
Yeah.
Alright, I am D. We have no guest speakers scheduled today, so I'm gonna move on to public comment. Anyone here? Just to address the council, we'd love to hear what you have to say, otherwise we cannot act, but we'll listen. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Which includes, um, motion to approve the minutes of the October 5th council meeting. Minutes of the special council meeting of October 13th. Motion to approve the extension to this year's football season. Special events permit to close off on street field. Hopefully two additional varsity football games. Um, the first reading of ordinance 781. Commending traffic and vehicles, chapter 65, stop or yield required, this is on the New Street. And resolution 1946 approving the submission of the city of West Branch fiscal year. 2020 annual finance report to the state auditor in claims report. Can I have a motion someone? Jerry.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? Two stop signs are needed on New Street, which is almost done. Hearing none, let's vote.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, item one is a second reading of ordinance 777. Providing general property taxes levied and collected each year on lot 26 Cedars Edge addition. Be paid to a special fund for payment agreed in connection with the West Branch urban renewal area. This is our second reading and this concerns that levy of taxes at the Little Lights location. I need a motion please. Jerry, I think.
Yep.
Right here. Nick will second. Any discussion? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Okay, we have a public hearing. I am gonna open the room to a public hearing. This is on, uh, first public hearing. Of zoning ordinance. This is not, this is the first public hearing, a proposed amendment to section 165. Of the West Branch zoning ordinance, this is concerning definition of corner lots. Lost myself there. Um, brought up by P and Z, better defined. Is anyone here to speak on this subject?
No one's here, but I can do it. So, um, a few years back, when chapter 165 12 was reviewed for corner lots and it was specific to determining the front yard, but the rear yard was not defined in that, so when our new zoning administrator took over, he noticed that there was a section lacking. So he reviewed it, gave a description, it went through P and Z, they approved, so this is just adding an additional clarity to that section.
Correct. Okay, I will, uh, close the public hearing. And move on to the first reading of the ordinance, 778. In chapter 165 entitled zoning regulations, which, uh, pertains to the such definition of a corner lot. Defining the lot in the rear yard setback. I need a motion. Colton and Nick. Any discussion? Alright, go ahead Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Alright, we have a second public hearing. I will open the floor to the second public hearing. This is in regards to the Wopsey Creek widening at Bronick Park. Approved the acquisition of property via eminent domain. So this is the public hearing, uh, to listen to the public. So I notice we have on Zoom, Kim Gaskill. Does anyone, I guess I'll ask, uh, comments from the public? That's what we're here for. Kim or Amy? Giving them a chance. During the public hearing or?
I'll wait on the resolution.
Okay. Um, I guess hearing no comment, I hope they're not trying and gonna be upset. So, um, hearing no comment at the public hearing, I will gavel out of the public hearing. And move on to, uh, resolution, uh, 1944. Intent, of intent authorizing acquisition of property interest for the Wopsey Creek widening at the Bronick Park project. This is the actual, um, not proclamation, but resolution. We don't have to go any farther, I need a motion. Nick? And Jerry? Kevin, please.
Yeah, this resolution is just a step in the process of going through to, this gives the city administration the, uh, go ahead to try and negotiate a settlement on any property interest we need for this project. It does say that we could use eminent domain also, that is not our intention, but to go through this process, we gotta follow the steps step by step. This is just the next step in the process, so, that is not our intent right now is to make, uh, we've been talking to the property owner in question and hopefully we can, uh, get the acquisition voluntarily, but this is just, uh, this is just a step in the process if we ever had to go to
Correct.
eminent domain.
Now, it can, and we're doing this now because we have 30 days or whatever from our last.
There was a, so when you do ag property, this property is up, it is in the city limits, but it's ag property and so you have a 30 day hearing before you pass this resolution, so that's what we did, if we didn't pass the resolution, you have to start over, there's no time limit on what, when you have to go forward and
From now on.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and I, we, as long as we're speaking amicably and moving toward a, um, agreement, this will not be needed, eminent domain will not be needed. That's our goal. Okay? So we have a motion to approve this resolution. And a second, is there any other discussion? Let's go ahead Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Okay. Item six is the setting of another public hearing regarding the sale of property that West Branch wants to sell. Because it was purchased in a Tiff district, right, renewal district.
So they need a 30 day hearing on this, we purchased this property, uh, via, with, using financing, uh, dollars, so we're setting this hearing for the 16th and at that time, at the 16th, after the public hearing, we can go ahead and approve the purchase agreement if everything, everything's in place, the one that we have already. And then, uh, at the 16th, then we can go ahead and approve that and if everything goes smoothly, we'll probably close on that property in a day or two after the council meeting.
Soon.
Second. Okay, got a motion in a second, it's not a resolution, but, uh, I still got, is it a voice vote or is this?
It's a voice vote, I have a motion there.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to approve the public hearing. Date, uh, Jody, you got a question? Oh. Were you the second?
No, I was.
Jerry was. Um, I forget, so many public hearings here, okay. I have a motion in a second to approve November 16th as the public hearing for the disposal of property. At its, the Reynolds Farm site, south of the Crow, old new Crow already, let's plant. Let's go ahead and vote Leslie, I'm just going too fast, I'm losing myself.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Alright, next up is a motion to approve another public hearing. Of November 2nd regarding vacating a storm sewer easement related to Lothian Ridge Estates. Need a motion someone, Nick? Jody, good job. Um, can, can you explain that to us?
In this, in the subdivision, there's an old storm sewer that goes through some of the new lots and it's not needed and part of our development agreement with Lothian Ridge that will come with the next resolution says that we will vacate that. So they can build out those lots, it's a storm sewer, I don't know where the storm, it was an old
It's from the golf course to
Yeah.
It drained Greenview Estates.
So the, uh, obviously the storm water when they do the subdivision will be changed into the
They put in more
now, so this is just an old one that'll be vacated, don't need to have it anymore, as you said, as part of our development agreement said we would do that, so you have to have a public hearing, so that's what we're doing in a second.
But that public hearing is after the hearing of the, approving the final plat, is that okay?
That's perfectly fine, I've talked to the developer about it also.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion in a second, right? This is just to set the date for public hearing of November 2nd. Go ahead Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, um, resolution 1942. Approving the final plat of Lothian Ridge Estates. Need a motion someone will chat. Nick? Jerry? This is the final plat and the developer's agreement. Are we a little early on this? They have submitted a letter of credit in the tune of 300 and some thousand dollars.
So under our subdivision code, you can either put the improvements in or put a letter of credit up, so the developer has chosen the letter of credit up, which we have in hand as, as of tonight, $330,000.
Yep, that's one of two ways that this can happen, finish the project or give this letter of credit. Before it is recorded, um, they have to give deposits to all the utilities. Utilities sign off.
The utilities will sign off on the final plat before it gets recorded. So if the council approves this, the engineer will take it all around to the, which I'm assuming they've already talked to the utility companies, but they all sign off on the final plat before it's recorded.
But there's no utilities in and there won't be for weeks probably. That's what part of the escrow is about also.
Educator. Don't mean to be stupid here, but I guess I am. So $330,000 and they don't have any robes in. We don't know if they've paid any of their vendors for the work that's been done up to this point. $330,000 isn't gonna cover all that stuff.
It's just to cover, but what they need to finish it to get it to final approval. Yeah, I don't know if we're concerned about having the vendors paid up to this point, I'm, I don't know. I'm assuming not, we're just concerned about what it takes to finish.
This, uh, 330,000 was, uh, their engineer and our, and Dave Scheckinger, uh, reviewed the numbers, so this number is for the public improvements. For some reason they didn't pay, they're being leaned against their properties and wouldn't be able to sell them, but you can't put a mechanic's lien against the city when the streets are dedicated, that's not allowed.
Right. So I'm sure you're involved in that.
I did not come up with that number, David might.
Yeah, I trust the engineers.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I maybe could clarify that for you a little bit.
Yeah.
Mike Welch with Axiom. So, uh, about a week and a half ago, Dave Scheckinger and I met onsite. And kind of did a walkthrough of all the improvements in to date. So currently, the sanitary sewer is installed, the water main is installed and the storm sewer is installed. They're in the process of rocking the streets with the intent, for the snow today, was to pave Gilbert, Gilbert Drive this week. And then they'll follow with paving Greenview and Prairie View the following week. And then that, as Kevin said, the escrow amount covers the improvements that have not been in yet. But they do intend on, on putting those in here, weather permitting. And then as Kevin also said, if the plat is approved or when it's approved by council, we will take that and get utility company signatures and get it recorded.
Okay. Um, this also includes, there's an outlot A, which is a detention basin, which will not be the responsibility of the city, it will be the responsibility of developer and/or homeowners association. They will also install sidewalks. Around that detention basin as required within a year or five years, I'm not sure which.
Same as the regular sidewalk, so by year, by spring. Which they would maintain those also.
The homeowners association one? Okay. Um, I don't know, I feel fine. Any other discussion? Got a motion in a second to approve, so let's, uh, let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Alright, let's talk about a turn lane, so, uh, resolution 1943. Approving the not to exceed amount of $100,000 to be contributed to the West Branch School District over the five year period. Where the construction of a turn lane, crosswalk and related sidewalks required for the high school expansion project. Someone give me a motion. Tom and Jerry seconds. Um, so this is the amount we've been chatting about for a few weeks. Um, I guess it's, it's our compromise.
You want me to bring anything about it since I guess the contingency all started with what I had recommended to begin with. And at our last council deliberations, it seems like the council's kind of stood on, on that concept, but I think the big picture of what that was trying to get to was that we know that there's some other aspects that's going to be considered as part of the project. And we didn't want the school district, the people coming back to us for more requests. So we include, uh, the other aspects to the overall, given I think everyone was comfortable with that $100,000 contribution. Then we don't have to worry about the concern of coming back and coming back again for, for new items. And we don't have to also get into the, the aspect of trying to manage, uh, another agency's continued. So I think this was kind of a compromise of, of both concerns and, uh, I think, I think it can work.
Um, so inside this, um, resolution is a crosswalk. Um, comming measures, what, what might that be? Related sidewalks?
Well, we still have a 2080 agreement that we have to carve out for you to get more detail on what that might look like. It could be anywhere from, uh, having a sign that links when people are crossing the crosswalk to the actual, uh, traffic, traditional traffic. So it just kind of depends, uh, what makes sense and we still want to be able to have, uh, some discretion, or at least some discretion from the school district to kind of figure out what it might be.
Correct. So this takes, this takes out the contingency, right?
This would take out the contingency and just make sure that we don't move back to the crosswalk and any related sidewalks that would need to happen. And it would be just the one, 100,000 based on our previous funding strategy of 50,000 upfront per year and then the remaining years being, uh, the equivalent of 12,500 dollars a year thereafter to year five.
Um, I think it's a good deal. Any other discussion? Um, the crosswalk, um, can you verify, can you explain that a little bit more? Crosswalk, what, what the city would be looking at for a crosswalk? Are we looking at a light or is it just?
So, I kind of went out and looked at some crosswalks, I don't, I can't say that, I know every possible crosswalk they're gonna look, be looked at, but I do have some pictures of the crosswalk where it has two poles on each side of the street with pedestrian, um, crossing signs that actually light up when, and it does have a button that you click when you want to cross the road. So those lights will, will blink. Uh, I saw that and then the other one, I actually liked, but it may be expensive, this is what we have by the, uh, park service, where it's actually a traffic light that has, uh, you know, red, green, yellow. When someone presses, presses that light and the light turns red. But there's probably others that I hadn't been able to look at, um, maybe even speed pumps and things of that nature that, uh, might be considered to be a traffic comming. Uh, that might be in order, but I don't think that speed pump will work in that type of road, but it is a comming measure.
In front of a high school?
Yeah.
Coming up with a 35 mile an hour.
Probably get turned up to a, there are gonna
Um, I like some idea of a light.
Yeah.
Of a light, stop.
I think the lighting light would be, yeah. Get your attention right away.
Explain to me how this is gonna work. We're gonna give them $100,000 over five years, they're gonna build a road and then we're just gonna interject what we want in it and they're just gonna do it, no matter how much it costs or whether it fits within their budget or any of that, they're not gonna tell us no, they're not gonna tell us. I mean, that's, that's kind of how you do it, right?
Well, they will build it per our approval. As part of the 2080 agreement, we would, we would have selection in the design of it. I think we would.
Yeah, that'd be spelled out in 2080, but, you know, our money, we'd have, we'd have a chance to review the design before they get anything out.
Okay. So we do have some more say still. Okay.
Um, most of the people I've talked to this last couple of weeks feel that the school is double dipping on the people of West, taxpayers. Because they've got this grant or this bond, I guess, bond. And it's been said that they're only spending 18 million of the 22 million. So they don't understand why the taxpayers are getting hit again when it's their projects that is causing this road to need turn lanes. So.
My answer to that is the city of West Branch, the citizens get an improved street, a safer street, the residents, the kids in town get a safer way to their school. That's what the city residents gain.
I understand that, but the citizens of West Branch have already paid once for this project, now they're having to pay again? I there's just some people out there besides me that have a hard time paying for something again. That's coming out of our taxes. Again.
Any other comments? I think part of that was that the study, my understanding of the study was that it was not the school that was causing the intersection, it was Dawson Drive. The general growth of the city is causing the traffic, the general growth of the city is causing the traffic counts to, to go high enough.
That doesn't make sense because we don't have anything at the community bank corner, we don't have any kind of control at Cedar Johnson Road. And this is in between it with the one Dawson Lane.
But I think the anticipated left turners at the high school merits.
But if you take out that, that entrance, then it's never been an issue. I mean, it, we've never had any traffic control there, we've the school's been there for how many years? And we never had to do anything like this.
I guess, the one thing I'm gonna say to my argument to what you said Jerry was that Dawson Drive, we know it's gonna been, been there for two or three years, we never thought about putting a turn, turn lane in until the school was gonna put that second drive in, so, so
Which was a few years ago.
Yeah. So, and then once the school said they weren't gonna do that, we dropped the, we didn't need the, the turn lanes anymore, Dawson Drive still went in, so I'm not buying that Dawson Drive is why, why we need the turn lanes. If there wasn't a road there for, to turn into the school, we wouldn't need turn lane, right?
Well, it's my understanding is with the middle school going out there, it's gonna cause increased traffic.
But that, so I don't have anything to do with Dawson Drive, that has to do with the, the school's development.
And the study showed that Dawson Drive was gonna create, with the growth of the city, was gonna create more traffic at that intersection.
But Dawson Drive was there before the school decided to put the elementary out or the junior high out there and the second drive.
Not just the job, the residents at Dawson Drive, it's, it's got 19 units It's not just the job, the residents at Dawson Drive. It's it's got nineteen units over here that have grown. We've got Lotham Ridge now coming on eventually. That's our growth also.
What we talked about in the special meeting. All that additional.
Correct. Okay. Any other comments? Let's vote then, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Stulman?
No.
Goodwiler?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Um, all right, we'll talk about wastewater. Resolution nineteen forty-five, engineering, an engineering services agreement for wastewater treatment, design and administration, construction administration, I believe, with V and K. Give me a motion, someone, resolution nineteen forty-five. Colton?
Second.
Jerry. I don't know what else to ask.
I got, I got something to talk about.
Go ahead.
So every time we do one of these big projects so far, since I've been on the city council, it's always went bad. Except for a couple of low ones, but most of them go bad. And and we always say, you know, the mistake we made was we really need to hire a project manager. Somebody that's not not the not the engineer. We need to hire a project manager that has only our best interest in mind and nobody else's. So this is maybe by far the largest project we've ever done in West Branch. And we're gonna go right down the same road we always go down that always ends up badly.
I'll back you up one. When I was on the council, we ran the new sewer through the park. We hired V Spring Kimdo to oversee the project. That's how they became our city engineer.
I'm not saying that they're not good.
No, 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 that it it went very, very smoothly. And to your point, you know, they overlooked overlooked the best interest of the city.
That's who we hired for the bridge.
The bridge. I thought that went pretty well.
That one went well.
Okay, but Tappy Park did not go well.
Well, we didn't hire anybody to oversee it.
That's Colton's.
Okay, we didn't hire anybody.
That's his point. We hired the design engineer to be the construction manager.
We hired the design engineer to be the construction manager.
I got all faith in B and K. I really do.
I think they do a good job.
Even the design engineer came back and said that they weren't really gonna project. After it was all said and done. There are services not included here, which we need to expect soil borings and geotechnical and wetland determinations and that we we need to understand are not in this contract. Those will be additional charges. I don't know how to answer your point, Colton. I don't know. I understand exactly what you're saying. I think I really like B and K and I trust him, so.
Well, I I do too as a design engineer, but I mean, I'm, when you have a design engineer and then and they're, they kind of have all the the get go with all of the the contractors and stuff, you need that third party that ain't working with one another that is working for us and only us.
This is, as far as construction oversight goes, they are working for us. They and only us.
Isn't there a design that we've all seen? Isn't it B and K's design?
Yeah. I don't know. I I feel good about it. Any other discussion?
Um, I I'd have one question, just probably way early, but do we, do we, do we have the ground for this extra lagoon?
So part of the facility, facility plan that was just completed was to make room for everything on our existing land. And if we need to purchase land, then that would have been also discussed. I think there was some land that's close to our neighbors that had relocated on.
Nordech's okay. They signed off on allowing us to be within a thousand feet.
Proctor and Gamble sign off too? I think they had to also.
They're, yeah, they're within a thousand.
I think they did.
They did.
That was from Dave.
Okay. Any other discussion? This is to hire B and K to design and oversee construction. Am I, I'm correct on that, right? That's what I was.
It's already designed.
No, it's not. Those are feeling nice. Yes. Time schedule, what, I don't know, year and a half? Pretty tight, seems like.
For completion?
Yeah, maybe.
That's just the design.
You're gonna have to design it.
Yeah, oh, you have to get D and R approvals, which aren't exactly quick.
It's there somewhere. I can't see it.
Exhibit B has the schedule on it and we have to have this project bid by September of next year. And then final completion is November of twenty twenty-two. And we do have a compliance schedule that D and R has given us. We're a little bit delayed on that schedule because of looking at different alternatives and doing some of this investigation with alternative methods out at the living site.
Okay.
So is is this all part of our water and sewer increase?
Our sewer.
Sewer.
This is all planned in there?
Well, we we had to do it and we have money set aside.
Right. And this was planned in there. So we're not gonna have to go back and raise taxes because I'd be in charge of another million dollars for design in engineering.
And we set the rates. We we knew how much revenue we were going to raise, but we didn't know, I don't think we knew exactly what our cost was going to be. We still don't know what our final cost is going to be for the project.
I actually was going to talk a little bit about the government manager before, but I can talk about it now.
Sure.
So, um, but I want to make sure that our expectations are stay real. We have a pretty large project. I think Colton's right. It's going to be, I think, the largest project that that we financed in the city's history. So it's kind of a big deal. So we did do a rate increase incremental increase plan, which we had to raise our rates two dollars and fifty cents. And we were to do that exponentially for the next three years. So you start off with the increase and that raise, we anticipate around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars by February. And then we we do it again, then that's going to raise roughly two hundred and forty thousand. That two hundred and forty thousand is in addition to the hundred and twenty that we raised the the previous year. Then we do it again in the third year. Um, that's going to roughly raise three hundred and sixty thousand. And that's going to go on top of the three hundred and sixty thousand that we've raised in the previous two years. So by the time it's all said and done, right around three, three-year period, we would have have raised about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, um, we knew that wasn't going to be enough, but we we didn't want to, one, shock the system with a huge rate increase when the construction was completed and and done. And we also anticipate that once it's totally done, it's a loan fund on the state revolving loan fund. They will determine what our rate will need to be for repayment. We won't have the discretion. So this way we have a little discretion and we can either buy down our overall loan or we could put it towards design or we could hold it for any type of payments to kind of keep our rates a little more stable than what maybe SRF is asking for. So the plan, we just went through the IUP. The IUP basically established the limit of what they're going to give the loan at. I think we were at seven point one eight and some change on on the IUP. So we anticipate that's going to be the limit. We also have are expecting to apply for a planning and design loan, which what they typically do is offer that at zero percent. Paying for the design cost and then at the time of construction being complete is wrapped into the overall loan. So we could either put our money towards buying down the design expenses or we can put our money to buying down the overall project expenses. But it was really never meant to be a total pay for all. We know we're gonna have another rate increase at some point in time after the completion of the construction. So that's.
We talked to like Walcott who completed theirs to see how.
Walcott was one of the places.
Is there grants out there or something that we need to be applying for?
Well, we just applied for, we just applied for a two million dollar grant that we didn't get. Uh, we did make, uh, we did, Walcott was one of the places we actually visited to look at there. And they have a different type of plan, by the way, but, um, we are looking at all those type of things every chance we get. I think that's been showing a pretty good history that we're making an honest attempt. I think that's one of the reasons why they haven't been harping too much on the compliance schedule. Uh, because they know that we've been very diligent in looking at our targets as well as financial options and and all that thing, so. And we won't stop. We'll keep on looking. We'll keep on looking for those types of opportunities when they present themselves. But we we've tried even making a plea to COVID nineteen grant money because we thought that one, the race increases is gonna be affecting the community that has already been hit with the economic aspects of COVID nineteen. And then there's also been recent studies showing that COVID nineteen can be survive a water treatment process. They're starting to look at wastewater and realizing that they can calculate COVID nineteen exposure in communities. So we went through all all those kind of things and we'll still keep on looking for them. Uh, but this is, this is where we are right now.
So Dave, do we have a ballpark figure of what this is gonna cost us?
Yeah, Redmond just mentioned we're about seven point one eight million is what we have applied for on the intended use plan. And that's holding our spot for a construction loan with the state revolving fund. That should be the total project cost. That's the design, construction, everything wrapped in.
Thank you.
Did you say, does that include this design?
Yes.
E?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't know if we're gonna do anything else.
How we paying for this? Sorry.
My question.
State revolving fund. State revolving.
The state revolving fund is a twenty-year loan and it's at roughly one point seven five percent interest. So what we'll do is once we get the construction done, from that point, they'll start payments and you'll hemorrhage that over twenty years. Rate increase that that we're proposing has to be shown to be able to cover that plus ten percent. So that's what Gordon and Redmond are working with the financial advisors on, is make sure that our rates are set, be able to cover that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be eligible to use that for it.
That's how we pay for it.
Sounds expensive.
I don't know what the alternative is.
I think we have a choice.
We really don't have it. Every community around us is putting in a new sewer plant. Okay, any other comments? Let's vote then, Leslie, to, we have a motion to approve engineering services.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yeah.
Goodwiler?
Yes.
Blaming you, Roger. It was bad. I'm blaming you, buddy.
Why wouldn't something that's big go out for bids?
When, how, what?
Why wouldn't something that big go out for bids?
The design and, I don't know, we hired our city engineer to do.
They're a city engineer.
Yeah.
Dave's sweating over there. I can feel it.
All right, let's discuss capital improvements. So item eleven is a capital improvements plan. Redmond has laid out some items here and I think there's one missing, but, uh, yeah.
We can't do any. We don't have any money.
Why do we spend money and then talk about spending more money?
So the capital improvement plan is is a planning document. So before we get into being able to actually purchase anything, you actually, or be able to finance anything, I should say, you actually have a funded portion and an unfunded portion. So you can literally have an entire capital improvement plan that's totally unfunded because you have no money. So the question of money is not so much the issue at this point. It's more so what is and what needs to be addressed as we look five years, even maybe ten years out on the horizon. So I think for us, we have some things that's definitely going to be happening a lot sooner than five years that we don't necessarily have a finance strategy for. Uh, those are probably things that would be ranked higher. So in the little matrix that I prepared, we, one, would would identify the department that would have the leadership of in in bringing that project or working on that project or dealing with that project during its its implementation stage. Obviously, what the project is, how it ranks with the council. And then we get into funding status or funding strategy. There's very many things in there that could be personnel expenses, services, contracts. That might be designs, those kind of things. And then obviously the capital, a capital expense. And then the actual description of of that that project. Um, and that should also include what happens if we don't do the project, what kind of effects it may have. So at this stage, I know we wanted to kind of start the conversation. I don't expect that we will do anything really tonight outside of then identifying what the project would be. In the next coming weeks, as we work up into the budget process, we will then have be filling out more of these items so that we can have a more discussion of a detailed discussion when we have our goal setting. And then after that, you know, the process, we'll actually see if we can find the money, what the strategy is. We can easily get to the point where we contribute to projects over a number of years. So that's why you see a five-year outlay in what year one, year two, or year three might be looking like as far as funding. Kind of like what we did with the turn lane situation. So that's, that's the process. So really, right now, I mean, I think Roger and I said. Roger and I said down and tried to identify um what is coming at us. I think um Roger alluded to, there was something uh that is more recent, just recently came at us regarding um main
Hoover Highway.
Hoover Highway coming in and um Johnson County has given us a couple of options on um what we would want to see. And it comes with various uh participation numbers. So we're, we're kind of getting that together on what exactly that is. And that's likely going to be um something that be considered as a part of this too. So that's, that's not on this right now, but um Cedar Johnson County Road is on there. All right, I think I had a little list here. Um. The downtown phase fours is the uh finishing, the streets gaping, um, the last section here. Maple Fifth and Cookson, we uh know that uh Chad's project is 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 right there. May wind up having stormwater going through there. It's not going to make sense to have this new stormwater facility uh um or 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 uh infrastructure going through there and then having roads and everything else all cracked up around it. So it'd probably require uh the city to do some investment there as well. Um.
What's the Cookson project, pavement project?
That's gonna, I think that's what I just was talking about with stormwater. So that's the um area that's down the road from Public Works Building.
That's Cookson Street. Cookson Drive is at Cookson. And then Maple runs Fifth Street, north and south, about a hundred yards long. And Maple Street. It's really bad pavement there, really bad.
Beautiful land products all down there on that area there. So um uh Greenview Connection, pretty hot. I'm, there's, there's some developments on that I guess we could talk about, but uh, that's going to happen um next couple of years. Um.
Next couple of years?
Well, we we said, uh, well, maybe soon. Try to, try to give us some ring here.
He misspoke, I think.
Yeah, there you go. Um. We've talked about uh turn lane for the BP project. Um, there's still a lot of items out there that's still um being determined on that, but that might be something that might require public involvement. The Crowe site is is ongoing and uh that's something that uh may require um particip- uh public participation. School lane, turn lane, we have already talked about that. And with uh Johnson Hoover Highway coming in, that might even need to coordinate with that project. May need also some, some more investment or at least uh some aggressive coordinations between the two projects that might be happening right around the same time. Cedar Johnson County Road is the big one. Uh, we know that um that road is going to be heavily used and with developments going in there and school um enhancements going out there, it's going to be a lot more, a lot more pedestrian uh traffic as well as the vehicular traffic. So um, okay. Oh, and then there's also, I call it the Northwest Water Pressure Booster System. So as the uh houses are being built out in Cedar, Cedar's Edge, they're going to probably be experiencing some issues that we already have experienced in the Bigfoot edition.
Uh, what happened to the East Side water improvement? We're doing everything for new.
Needs to be on here. That needs to be on here. Okay.
And the East Side, those, those projects are being handled in our operations budget. So you might recall that our Public Works budget increased so that we can handle those projects within those. So these are typically, I mean, we can, we can put that if, if you want to see those in there, but we were typically handling that.
Like to keep an eye on them.
Okay. But yeah.
We seem to forget, nothing's been done in three years now.
Yep. So yeah, we, we, we have our operation system on it, but we can reflect any of your services for planning purposes, so.
I mean, we also have Greenview that only adds four inch water main also, not just the East Side.
Okay. So I left a couple of blank sheets on the back for that, for those things. So I can make sure if this, that's where, you know, I'm hoping to get that kind of feedback. Not trying to leave anything out.
So what are you looking for us, looking for tonight then? Uh, one of hierarchies, one through five, the top five or?
Well, if you can, yeah, if that would be nice. I didn't expect to get that from you, but I was just trying to get things like what Jody offered, whatever.
We need to all come up with five or ten things of our own that we think would be important. We can all sit and talk about it. Then we can break it down into wants, needs.
So that's another meeting.
Like that. Yeah, this is a long process, dude. You ain't doing this and playing that.
And you gotta watch football game in thirty minutes.
We've done this before. This is.
I agree.
No.
Not only that, but then you need to think about, I mean, it's a great idea to borrow money to do all this stuff, at least have the plan in. But we can't, we're not really in a position to borrow any money to do anything because we don't know what we're going to have to borrow cash flow for our sewer project. And so we kind of almost need to leave all of our credit where we can get our hands on it if we need to, just to make the cash flow demands to build our sewer.
So and I, I guess I should say, and Dave was right, how SRF works. But at the end of the day, we're still, general fund is still the collateral for any of our enterprise funds. So it's, it's been meant to live within the enterprise fund, but if there was any kind of forced majority that required um us to find funds somewhere else, general fund is the one backing it up. So they're like the cosigners for anything that we do um with our enterprise funds. So you know, even though we have a strategy and it's pretty tested and well planned out, there could be something that could happen that would make the general fund horrible.
I'm not poo pooing. This is a great idea. We need to do this, but this, this is a long drawn up deal. Matter of fact, we hired somebody special to come in and help us the last time. But.
Was that he?
Yeah.
Oh.
Did we actually follow through with it?
Yep.
We did.
We did. And in matter of fact, we had a, we had a ten year program. We did the first five years of it and then we ran out. So.
Yeah, actually.
Matter of fact, if they could pull that, pull it up, maybe it's probably the other five things probably need to be done, but.
Well, I, I also added that last, last program is the last page on the thing. So you can see what was actually done, what didn't get done. So.
Guys, the bridge was kind of our tube to grow on it. We're still licking our wounds over the last CIP plan we did.
The only thing that really went bad was Forest Street.
Forest Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bad soil.
And we got three aggressive ones. Improvement plans in a short period of time.
Yeah, we had, we had streets tore up everywhere.
Yeah, there's some sidewalks that are the.
We're giving driveways away like they were. Well, driveway, we'll give you a driveway.
All right. So what are you looking for tonight, Redmond? What have you?
So is there, I, I heard East Side Water Projects. Um, I'll add that. Are there some other things that that we know of that we need to add?
Um, I'm going to add Hoover Highway. Hoover Highway Main Street. We'll have to decide if uh we are going to spend money there or not. I'll share that email with everybody that I got, that we got.
Yeah, I had.
Friday, I think it was, that.
I had some pictures in my uh manager's report, but then my computer did the thing. So I'll have it out tonight.
Okay.
Can you use your computer?
I think I might. I think we probably all could use some in the main office, but we're, we're managing for now, but they're pretty old.
This year, we're supposed to be overlaying Main Street.
For two hundred and five thousand.
For four hundred thousand dollars, the whole east and, east and west. Little do they know what a turn lane costs.
Yeah, if there's any some things on there like, like that, that we didn't get to last time around, we could add those too.
And the town hall still sits there.
Talk about.
Cookson Drive.
It is again. We've killed that project.
Well, because, well, the, the Maple one I can see, but that Cookson Drive, what, what are you servicing there really? Our, our own building. Dave's, which isn't even an operational business at this point.
Our own guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and you know, that's a lot of money to spend on our own guys, basically. So they can go ahead and drive some powders and go to work.
I think we got big enough trucks to get through it. We have new trucks.
Let's keep, coal patch is cheap.
Write it on there and scrape it.
That duplex on Maple.
That's main, that's Fifth Street.
Is it Fifth Street?
Yeah.
That duplex, they are sitting in the bed.
Fourth Street is what I'm here. Fourth.
Whatever, that lime green.
That whole, that whole corner right there where.
Yeah.
It gets pretty deep.
But there's drainage issues. If those. Doesn't matter what kind of street you put in.
And that's what you were talking about.
Right.
We'll fix the majority of that, of the water issues.
The water issues.
Yeah, but yeah, we're going to collect probably ninety-five percent of the water that that goes down Hoover now. We'll collect that on our basis.
Sound like a good plan. Okay.
So.
So.
Got a couple there. And um, I think what we'll do is, is kind of fill out that as, and maybe have another, may even have a, a work session because I think we wanted to talk about how TIF can be explored to you, to be, you know, so we'll have Kevin and Maggie at some point bring, bring minds together and kind of have a session to kind of work through.
I got to thinking about that. I don't know if we want the two of them in the same room together.
No, they're not completely opposite.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes a little bit of a cage fight is good. I don't know. But no, yeah, so we can kind of weigh those two off because I do think they have two distinct perspectives on it.
Okay, so the coming two months, so we need to certify our TIF asking by December. That'd have to be the October nineteenth meeting.
I think November sixteenth.
Oh, we got another month, another week. I mean.
Two weeks.
All right, so we got to get that solidified. Shouldn't be too hard.
I don't know if we have any.
And in December, we usually start talking about the budget.
Well, we don't have any new, we're not expanding our map or our, or regular map yet. So that makes it a little easier. Okay. And then um anybody have any other ideas? Just give, just give me a call out. There's animal and put together a little page that will basically use that, that bone as our capital improvement plan and we'll just keep on adding on to it. Yep.
Okay. This will move on. Is that your administrative part two?
Yeah.
All right. Kevin, anything? Uh, Matt, Melissa, I don't even see Melissa's still going. Matt, what do you got? Anything?
Um, only thing I got is we did put in a bid on a dump truck um from the city of Manchester and we ended up getting that. So we'll have that truck. I, I guess we're supposed to go pick it up next week after it goes through their council. Um, but it's a two thousand nine single axle. Um. It's a really nice truck. It's got nineteen thousand miles, I believe on it. And yeah, it's in really good shape. We got it put in a bid of right around thirty-five thousand. We're going to then put uh, get the frame sandblasted and do some paintwork on it. Um, we should still come in under the, well, hopefully I'm, I'm hoping about five thousand under the fifty that we have budgeted for that truck. So, but we lucked at that truck and multiple other ones at dealers and this was still, even with doing the paint and all that work, comes in relatively close to what any other truck would come in without us actually getting it painted to have. We're going to paint it red to match the rest of the West Branch trucks. And just make sure that's starting out as a decent truck with no rust on it, so. Um, aside from that, I was going to ask about we have Paul O'Neil re- retiring in January. So by the be, beginning the mid of, mid next month, I need to put that job position out. We had some applicants last month, or last time we did the interviews that I'd like to they've already all agreed to put their applications back in. And I wanted to kind of get a consensus from council as to whether we need to put that job out for a for the normal amount of time. If we can put it out for like, say a week and then use the ones we already have. Plus whoever comes in in that week or just use the ones that we already have. I believe Kevin said it was okay to just use the ones we already have, but we can, I can put it out for a for a month or a week or whatever. I just kind of seem like if we don't have to put it out for that long and we can use some of the people we already got and maybe wait on another, see if there's anybody else applies. If we put it out for a shorter length of time.
You've got some really good candidates last time, right?
Yeah, there's four that are, they're, they're all qualified.
So I, I would suggest to use those four and go and hire one of those. That's my feeling.
Why we reinvent the wheel with interviews and all that. They know what they've got. You got.
He's interviewing.
You're just kind of going through the motions anyway.
Yeah, I think it's just the motions. Okay.
Okay. If everybody's good with that, then I'll, I'll pull in the four that we already had. And we'll get it lined up as soon as, I don't know, we'll probably re-interview the top two out of them. And not a big interview. Keep it short, but then we'll uh I'll try to get the, the pay figured out to whether or not we can bring them in in December when Paul actually leaves or if we have to wait until he actually retires. Because I think he's going to take his vacation beginning mid-December. So he actually will be gone for six weeks before he retires. So if it works out money wise, I'd like to bring them on when Paul leaves for his vacations or, so we have that person. And so we can train them for snow, for plowing and everything before we're actually in the middle of winter. So.
Is that our decision to make? I mean, obviously KMB.
I mean, it's.
It fits in his budget is.
Yeah, as long as you guys are okay with, I mean, we hired Max three months in, so we actually are about ten thousand up on where we were before.
I would prefer that to be really handled by me and Gordon. So, yeah. I think uh we have some extra time at the meeting. We're probably going into things that we probably shouldn't with council, but as long as, as long as legal's okay with the, the hire, then we're good. And then we'll work through the numbers and we'll present the recommendation whenever we come back with that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Uh, Melissa's gone on vacation. Anybody else? I got a couple of things. Anybody else?
Talk about review.
I have one connection.
Let's let Nick go first and. Let's let Nick go first and.
I don't think it's, it's someone on the strike, but it's probably not as big of a deal now with the restaurant moving, but are we ever gonna get Casey's?
I contacted them last week again, and I said, I mean, we haven't paid them their last payment because they aren't done yet, like, and they, for some reason, they wanna keep paying property taxes on the building, which kind of shocked me, so. I have heard back from her, I talked to Gordon last week, and I emailed the people in A and E again after we were done, and I've heard back yet, so I'll see if I can, it doesn't fall off my radar, but.
I, okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't.
Did we deny their TIF asking?
We haven't, we haven't given their payment yet.
I asked for the whole amount.
The check, because they haven't held up their part of the bargain, or they, they haven't held up their part of the bargain, haven't performed.
But you, you still should ask for the money, if you guys do it a year in advance.
That's the TIF ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that.
We did do, we did do that, yes.
Yeah. We made that mistake.
But that's.
Wasn't somebody down there surveying it last week?
Well, maybe that, maybe they're doing something, cuz I told them the area is a need to be fixed, so we could actually use it for.
It's where I saw somebody surveying it. I didn't know if we were doing it, or.
She didn't, she didn't get back to me, but she could have talked to whoever did the project the first time.
I don't know why they'd want to survey, they should know what to do.
Well, but they, are they trying to figure out what? They still gotta give us the deed though, too. Cuz I can't take them title to it.
But wasn't, they were almost in this position last year, and they were gonna, then the, they ran out of good weather the, to do the parking lot, so then.
That's right.
We had all this good weather, now here we are again, right?
What happened was they, they did it, but the, they didn't backfill properly in a couple places, so if you tried to put a car there, it'd go soft. So they've done, you know, their contractor did what what they thought was needed to be done, they just.
What are we looking for there? Are we looking for concrete?
No, that's not what we agreed to. But you gotta have something where you can actually, that's it, that's something that you can actually.
So.
Park on about its thinking.
We agreed to ask for ownership and seal.
Yeah. We asked for concrete to begin with, to have it.
Right now, it's nothing. Okay, uh. So that was your comment, Casey's thing, three view connection. Um I think where we're at on that is we're just really, really pushing it to get it through this fall. Um uh, so I wish we could get some of the utilities moved. Electrical, gas, and get the, this tornado siren moved. I don't know why that couldn't happen before either the ground freezes or first thing in the spring. I don't even know who's gonna do that. Is that for us to coordinate? Go Dale to figure out and get that done, or I don't know who does that.
I guess that was one of the other things in my report that I was gonna talk about. So the utilities, the, not to, the gas, um is to be moved, but it's at the expenses of the utility company, so they drag their feet typically, and we've been, uh, between developer and, and.
Do they know that it's gotta be moved?
Yes, they do. They've known since July.
Since July, it's not at their leisure. We bulldoze the crap and then they fix it.
I've already hit it.
I think, I think, I think there's been a strategy to that, and I think this happened in these ones, yep. Now, the siren, uh, that's on us, and uh we did have, uh, I think Oasis looked at it, and it, I think was a little bit too big for them or, or outside of their wills yet, so uh we're still figuring on um how to get that moved. I think we have got a, a lead from a sign company.
That's for sign, I, I'd call a sign company, and maybe Gaskills knows somebody or.
So, you know, that, that could possibly happen.
We're about our EMS people, the, the emergency management people in Cedar County, you know, that, they might know people that do that.
Well, isn't this the second time we moved it? It used to be on the first curve, and now we've moved it.
Didn't even work.
That was a wooden pole, yeah.
We could call the company that did the repair work.
Well, we need to find out from Dave, probably Shackinger, where to put it. If, if it can be in that location up there somewhere. One side of the industry or another, that's the first thing we need to figure out.
Try to figure out where to put it, cuz if we could do that now, without having to take it back to our shop, or put the project done and move it again, it, it'd be like.
There's no power to it, it's all solar power.
Well, I guess I'm a little frustrated because we started this way back in June and July, and we're no farther along than what we were then. And we're sitting here waiting for someone to make the phone call to get these utilities moved, and here we are, it's the end of October, and the utilities aren't moved. And when they decide to come through there, I don't wanna be reactive, I wanna be proactive. I wanna, I wanna be waiting on them, not having them wait on us. So I don't know who, who has to make the call, but it's us, let's make the call and get the utilities moved.
Look how long it took a lion up there and rescue. I mean, it's gonna take forever.
And that wasn't even moving existing stuff, that was setting up service so they can charge you. Took them that long.
Well, I know, I have a call in myself to R, REC, so there was a call that's made, but I know that there's been other calls made by uh Needham and I, IWB, so um from what I understand, they, they kind of do put it on the back of their, the lowest priority on their list of things to do from what I've been told.
I just, I don't want it to hold it up when we're ready to go into spring. We're gonna get bids to, to do the job.
So, now, I wanna I wanna, there's somebody, there's a water line going through there too, isn't there?
Yeah.
Now, that's us.
That's us. We would bid that out to somebody.
I mean, I guess we can't get too upset with them, we haven't took care of our stuff. Cause a general rant.
All inclusive. We got work to do. Bottom line is, we have work we can do on it.
So, um, I'm hearing that we want, when's our target date? Are we gonna go for spring, or are we gonna still go for fall?
It's too late for fall.
I think that should.
It's too late. Okay. Finding a contractor to scramble before it gets really frozen is a problem.
But, but we don't tell the utilities that. The utilities, as far as the utilities, shut the camera off, Becky, is we're, we're doing this, we're doing this this fall, you need to hurry up.
Okay. Alright, that's the message.
I'd kind of like to have it open by summer, June. June first.
June's the target.
I, I would love to have it open by June first.
Redmond, this is Dave Shackinger, following our meeting out on site after we spoke with the contractor, and they told us that that unlocated line, electric line, was located at the rear lot lines, and it hasn't been located since they started the project. I contacted Josh Fannabecker, he's the account manager for this territory for Lynn County REC. Um, told him about that, asked him if we could get that moved in the next six weeks. He's got it on his schedule. He's wanting to try to make that happen, and as we discussed out on site, um we do have the water main. Initially, it was thought to be deeper than uh it is, it's, it's pretty shallow, which is why we need to relocate more um through that cul-de-sac. I've spoken with Matt Go Dale, and I think we're going to try to make uh some provisions to get that done here the next several weeks as well. Um, we'll have most of the utilities relocated, and then the contractor, Needham, will come back in and finish that grading, and that's part of that agreement with the escrill that we passed earlier tonight on Lathan Ridge. So we do have plans in place, just going to take a little bit due to utilities, and some of that was unexpected since they weren't getting located previously, we weren't known to be there.
Alright, thank you, Dave.
What size vein is that down there? On your?
Six or eight.
Six?
Six, I think.
That all the way up to the main circle?
It goes through the circle at, at six inches, I think. I don't know where it gets smaller.
Okay. It stays six inch all the way through. It's eight inch on the top half of the loop, when you get over to the corner by where Jerry lives, and then on the s- uh, the north side there, it's a six inch. It's eight, yeah, it's eight and six out there, and eight inch travels all the way through over to the Cedar Johnson.
So do we need to increase that to an eight inch then, with all the development? They all tied.
I, I don't think it'd be that necessary. We have a twelve inch that runs down Cedar Johnson. And that ties into the other end of the eight inch. The, any kind of pressure issues out there come from the, just the elevation. I don't know that we actually have volume issues, we have pressure issues. I would, I would say that a six inch is fine there, since it's being fed from the other end with, with a eight inch and a twelve inch.
Alright. Um, Christmas pass is being planned. Uh, we're gonna go Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Spread things out, no carriage rides. However, there is a, planning an ice skating rink to be, you, you, somebody's gonna set it up and operate it. I think it's inside the wash bay of the fire station. Families will uh reserve an hour for twenty bucks, when you show up to, for, to skate for the, the hour, you get your money back in the form of uh downtown dollars to be spent downtown, so it's basically, it's, it's a great, great idea, um ice skating rink. The donuts will still be, the Boy Scouts will do donuts still. Um, Santa Claus maybe.
Drive up.
Inherited Square. Um, a reverse parade, may start up at the football field, kids can line up with their families in their car and go around back behind the winery. Give a list to Santa, and he, I don't know what happens from there, say hi to Santa and exit, kind of a reverse parade is what it's called.
The donuts are drive up, too.
Donuts are drive up, okay. At the same place.
Um, no, they can't have firewood, I don't remember, I don't know.
The old Casey's lot, they're not going there, are they?
Maybe they are.
There may be a farmer's market at uh Tony Napolos's building, the old mobile building, I think they might try to get that. Silent auction, somewhat online. It's, it's not gonna be easy, but we're gonna try to pull it off still. CDG's working hard on it.
No hot dogs at the fire station.
Probably no hot dogs, but maybe two fires instead of the one big one.
No hot dogs.
Right.
Just.
Um, Chief Horahan has a, what, a month left? No, less than that.
By the time I take vacation, it'll be a month.
Yeah, so we gotta plan a party or something, lots of drinking and going home. So. Yeah, that was a joke. So, um um we had a brief meeting with uh Tom and Nick, the new police chief hiring committee, myself, a citizen. Where were we at on that? What, we were gonna? Yeah, no, we were gonna.
Oh, you mean the date?
Yeah, what were we gonna do? I can't remember right now.
An interview?
Well a citizen's getting questions, we're, we're developing our question.
Getting questions together, that's correct. We're gonna interview in-house. And uh, that's moving forward.
That's a good, yeah, let's do that.
That's all I got. Anybody, anything else? Motion to adjourn someone? All's in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Eat that last piece of meat so I can take. Wife's just unlocked.
How was it?
Good, very good.
Take that out before calling?
Well, he beat his hand in my password, so I, I guess I got seconded.
Alright, that went pretty well.
You almost got it.